Here. There we go. Good evening, everyone. Great to see everybody here. Want to welcome everyone. It's wonderful to see such a great group here and we're going to be engaged in some fantastic awards in just a moment. I'm going to call this meeting to order and we are going to get started. With the Open Public Meetings Act, statements hereby made that adequate notice of this meeting was given by posting written notice prominently on the bulletin board in the office of the Board of Education, 65 McCamber Road, Homedale, the district's website, and sent to the four district schools, mailing of hand-delivered said notices designated newspapers, Azure Park Press, Star Ledger, PLG, PSG, PSA, PTSO, SAB Presidents and Student Representatives to the Board, and filed with the Clerk of Homedale Township Police Headquarters and the Public Library. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Wall.
Here.
Mr. Demari.
Here.
Mr. Ready.
Here.
Dr. Kolor. Currently absent. Mrs. Tessillo.
Here.
Mr. Buckley.
Here.
Mr. Mann.
Here.
Mr. Labetti.
Here.
Mrs. La Presti.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And we have the folks that are here for the William R. Sats Model UN Team Recognition, which would be presented by Dr. Scott Cascone and Ms. Chantel Simonelli and the board. We wouldn't typically go into executive session. There is a, an item where they received a letter indicating that it was 6:00 PM, not 7:00 PM. So we're moving it up front because we have all these wonderful families here to recognize their fantastic students. So what I'd like to have is a motion to suspend the rules to consider item I, which is the William R. Sats Model UN Team Recognition. Dr. Cascone and Ms. Chantel Simonelli, may I have a motion, a second and a roll call?
Second.
Moved by board member Tessillo and seconded by board member Mann. Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Wall.
Yes.
Mr. Demari.
Yes.
Mr. Ready.
Yes, absolutely.
Mrs. Tessillo.
Yes.
Mr. Buckley.
Yes.
Mr. Mann.
Yes.
Mr. Labetti.
Yes.
Mrs. La Presti.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to turn it over to our administrative team for the William R. Sats Model UN Team Recognition. Thank you.
Thank you, President Wall. Ms. Simonelli, Mr. How? Will you join me?
Folks, I'm sorry. Everyone, please stand up, rise and salute our great flag.
Thank you very much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to our board member and veteran, Peter Ready. Thank you for your service and the service of all the veterans who help keep this country safe. Freedom is certainly not free. Thank you. Dr. Cascone.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. So just once again, good evening, members of the board, community members, and of course, wonderful families and Model UN champs. Let's call it what it is. Champions, really. First place.
Premier. Okay. Right?
Premier, premier delegation, as they're referred to. Just to give you a little bit, a little bit of detail on this. So they competed in the Model UN Showcase, which was in Hershey, Pennsylvania. They won the premier delegation award. There were 94 students that traveled with the team and they stood out amongst 1,400 students and 15 other delegations. So Homedale was number one, took the gold, blue ribbon, another round of applause. So before we commence with the certificates, I just want to know if there's anyone from this outstanding delegation that would want to come up and volunteer to just share with the board a little bit about the, what you did, some of the experience, how you prepared. Anyone, have any volunteers? Why don't you guys come on up and, and share with the board some of the things you did to, to take home the premier delegation award? Thanks, gentlemen. And if you want to just introduce yourself to the board?
Hello, everyone. I'm Samvi Raj. I'm an eighth grader.
Hi, everyone. My name is Druv Thogarchedu. I'm also an eighth grader.
So Model UN was a wonderful experience where we students of Sats and many other teenagers like us got to simulate what it feels like to be a representative in the actual UN. We got to debate real world issues going on in this moment, such as food insecurity and the spread of misinformation and disinformation. We had to do research about our countries and we had to speak from the stance, not from our personal view, but we had to take an initiative and speak from the view of a country. It was a great leadership opportunity, helped many people develop public speaking skills and was overall a great time as many people made friends and had a blast.
My personal experiences at Model UN is that before Model UN, I was very nervous. I was just very, I feel like nervous about just all of the research I had to do, knowing about my country, but I feel like it was a very eventful thing. I, my best part, the best feeling that was is being very social. There were so many people on your delegation that were just coming from different backgrounds that were all so lovely to me. And I feel like the best part was ICC Criminal Court because I've always like myself wanted to like feel like a lawyer and it was so like fun with your friends trying to research, defend certain people.
Additionally, we also had to write the problems to the solutions and many kids had to pitch together and generate creative solutions. And on the final day, three kids from Sats were actually recognized with special awards. And I think it was just a great experience for everyone and I'm so happy that I could be a part of it.
Thank you, gentlemen. I understand. Looking at me, thanks for coming up.
Hey, Scott, do we know what country they had to represent?
When I, when we sent their certificates, we're going to note their countries as well. Cool. Great question, Mr. Ready.
And ladies and gentlemen, when you, we're going to call your name. When you come up, I'll just ask you to sort of kind of array yourself in front of the board. Once everyone's been called, get them an opportunity to take a picture with the Board of Education. They'll stand up and, and take a photo with you. So without further ado, our recipients. First is Dilip Adada, Bangladesh. Congratulations. Liam Azui, China. Ryan Bavosa, Russia. Grayson Bell, Russia. Bianca Bender Jocelyn, Brazil. Brandon Bender Jocelyn, China. Bryce Bennin, India. Patiana Bolova, Germany. Andrew Chen, Sri Lanka. Zayan Chang, Indonesia. Now, just a quick little word about this next recipient, Annabelle Cho, who did Indonesia. Annabelle, are you here, Annabelle? So Annabelle, applause for Annabelle. Annabelle Cho received the Outstanding First Year Delegate Award. And I forgot to mention that Grayson Bell, who has already been called up, won the YMCA Core Values Award, which is given to only one student each year. The YMCA Core Values Award is the most coveted individual award at the conference because it means you displayed all the core values of the YMCA. Honesty, responsibility, caring and respect. And so that is quite an honor to be recognized amongst 1,400 delegates. Sam Chu, United Kingdom. Nico De Filippis, Poland. Pranav Deshpandi, Sudan. Owen DeVito, Yemen. Sean Diaz, France. Maya Francis, Argentina. Mahati Kasyap, Ethiopia. Zara Khan. Canada. Jonathan Kim, Belgium. Michelle Longyear, Mexico. Oh, Michael, I apologize. I think I need better glasses. It's time to upgrade to 1.75. Kenzie Mandar, Cuba. Abi Metta, Italy. Lucas Mesa, Italy. Mohamed Musa, Venezuela. Zaire, I'm sorry, Zar, Zara Nayir, Malaysia. Trish Nekanti, Cuba. Serena Patel, Ethiopia. Sebastian Postigo, Papua New Guinea. Now, a special shout out to this student. Actually, for the second year in a row, second year in a row, this student received the premier delegate award. Not only was this student recognized by his peers, but the entire conference recognized his abilities. During the conference, he worked as a mentor to the other students and he would literally stand next to the other students and whisper in their ear guidance. And that student is Samvi Rash. Peter Scheiss, Spain. Ishan Shah, Nigeria. Duruv Thogarchedu, Canada. Ishan Trivedi, Chile. Taran Yalagada, Myanmar. Ian Zheng, Cambodia. Also like to acknowledge Stacy Harris, who is the team facilitator. Is she here? Or he, I apologize. Stacy Harris. Oh, from the YMCA. Yes, sir. Stacy. Congratulations, sir, and thank you for all your work. And last but not least, I have to thank the parents and guardians. I mean, I know that, I think you, most of you, if not all of you ventured to Hershey and accompanied, did not. Any of you? Some parents went. Okay. Well, not with the parent. Well, good for you, kids. You got a week, a week away from your folks. Well, you worried the whole week. Well, that's, that's close. That's good. We'll, we'll give you credit for worrying, but beyond that, really just thank you. Obviously, behind every outstanding student stands a supporting, amazing family. So thank you for all you do to support your children and helping to partner with us to help raise them to be the great kids they are. Another round of applause.
So folks, yeah, what we'd like to do now, have the kids, could just come on back, come back by the board. If the board can come in, all next to each other here and also the staff members that are involved in this wonderful program. And then we'll, and if the parents want to take as many photos as you like, and we're glad you're here and celebrate these fine young students. Thank you again, everyone. Have a fantastic week. Consisted with item D, resolution for executive session. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act specifically NJASA 10:4-12B permits a public body to go into executive closed session, we'll be discussing the matters, including student matters, personnel matters, and matters falling within the attorney-client privilege. I have a motion, please.
Motion. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Wall.
Yes.
Mr. Demari.
Yes.
Mr. Ready.
Yes.
Mrs. Tessillo.
Yes.
Mr. Buckley.
Yes.
Mr. Mann.
Yes.
Mr. Labetti.
Yes.
Mrs. La Presti.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. We're now in executive session. Regular session will resume about 7:00 PM or so and action is intended to be taken during the regular business meeting agenda. Thank you very much. Welcome, everyone. We will move on to a motion to return to public session. If you would, maybe have a motion, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Wall.
Here.
Mr. Demari.
Here.
Mr. Ready.
Here.
Dr. Kolor. It's here. Muted. Mrs. Tessillo.
Here.
Mr. Buckley.
Here.
Mr. Mann.
Here.
Mr. Labetti.
Here.
Mrs. La Presti.
Here.
Motion passes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. The meetings of the board are open to the public and all members of the community should feel free to participate. We're going to have two areas where you can speak. One is earlier at the beginning of the meeting for agenda items only. And then the second is for any item at all. And we, do we have our, is it spesial here this evening?
There.
That's one shot. Okay, great. One item that wasn't on the agenda, but should have been on the agenda, but that's why I'm discussing it now. We're going to talk about the contours of ingress and egress for Sats in the high school. It's a project for those that are familiar with traveling in and out of the high school or trying to travel to and from to perhaps your commute or perhaps police fire first aid, trying to do your work that you do. It's a, it's a, it's a road project that is about 20 years old. And we're going to bring it back up. We're going to talk about it. And hopefully, we're having very positive communications with the township committee. It's really a capital project from the township committee side, but we wanted to have the folks review their, the, the work product and what you're seeing so far. And perhaps we may authorize them to go carry forward, get the design work. And from my standpoint, we'll get it to the township committee for inclusion in the 2024 capital budget. So that's an item that's going to be coming up and folks can speak to that or there would be public comment for that as well. What I'd like the board and the public to indulge us in, we had a flag salute earlier, but in the, for the public, it's listed right here. If you'd kindly stand now, we're going to salute the, the great flag of the United States of America. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for that. Now, I would turn the meeting over to Dr. Scott Cascone.
Thank you, President Wall. Mr. Howard, would you join me up at the microphone, please? Good evening, members of the board, staff, community members. So many people may not be aware that January is Board of Education Appreciation Month. You probably don't get a whole lot of appreciation. And it's never been, truly never been a more complex endeavor than now to serve on a board of education. You know, the, the, the hours that are put in, the challenging situations in which you find yourself are unprecedented to previous boards. And I asked a, a board member the other day and this board member, you know, had a simple response and she just said it's, listen, it's, you know, it's for the kids. And that's ultimately, I think, you know, all of us really that work in this profession, we all shoulder our own labors and challenges within this profession. But at the end of the day, I think that's something as boards of education, as staff, administration, one thing we share in common is that we, we do the work and we, we handle the challenges for the kids. But this month is really an opportunity and here to acknowledge the Homedale Board of Education for their time, for their efforts. And so really just a simple, but sincere presentation of a certificate of appreciation on behalf of the children, students, staff, administration, families for the work you do. And so I'm just going to ask Mr. Howard to work his way around the dais to present you with the certificate. And then we just appreciate if we would take a picture. So first, Board President Terrence Wall. Vice President Christian Demari. John Buckley, board member. Dr. Sarika Kolor, who's joining us virtually.
Thank you.
Board member, thank you, Dr. Kolor. Board member Anthony Labetti. Board member Allison La Presti. Board member Peter Ready. And board member Kimberly Tessillo. And board members, if you wouldn't mind just standing and we'd like to take a picture of you for the, for posterity. Oh, and, and last, and my goodness, Board member Jeff Mann. Sorry about that, Mr. Mann. That's on the way. Come, come a little bit, yeah, come that way a little bit. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And thank you to all the board members for the work that you do. It's exceptionally important on behalf of the students. That is quite literally why we're here. Thank you again. So speaking of students, could we have the report from the student representatives for Homedale Schools? Thank you. How are you guys doing? All right? All good?
Yeah, we're good.
Terrific. Thanks. So go ahead. Lead it off. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. The senior prom is Friday, June 7th at Arm and Freehold from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Prom tickets are $50 each and all paperwork is due no later than Friday, March 1st. In addition, the String Musical of Little Women is looking for string musicians. So if anyone is interested, please email Dr. Riso. Thank you to all who came out and supported the pizza contest on Friday night. Everyone had a great time and congratulations to the winner at barbecue pork rib pizza. We raised $1,600 for the Jack Dow Memorial Scholarship because of your kindness and generosity. Thank you again. Lastly, this year's Relay for Life will be happening on Froggy Field from 4:00 to 10:00 PM on May 17th. All proceeds, including a $15 registration fee, are donated directly to the American Cancer Society. We kicked off fundraising this week with the annual Tape Administration where Dr. Kokoda was taped to the wall. Thank you. And I will now pass the student report on to Jack.
Thanks, Anuna. The freshman and sophomore student council would like to invite all underclassmen to this year's winter dance. The event was a huge success last year and we have high expectations. The dance will take place on Friday, February 23rd for ninth and 10th grade Homedale High School students from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. Ticket sales will begin on January 22nd. Please see a student council member, Ms. Menjes, Mrs. Howpin, or Mrs. Scott to purchase your ticket. Tickets are $20 per student. We'd also like to thank all students who participated in today's lunchtime Battle of the Classes events. It was a huge success and helped to build hype for the upcoming Spring Battle of the Classes. Congratulations to the seniors on their win. They earned 40 points towards their class's score. Thank you. This concludes the student report.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Did you want to say?
I, I do. I have two questions. First, with the Jack Dow Pizza Night, which class won? Who had the most attendees?
It was the seniors by far.
Awesome. Which was a great, making it part of the Battle of the Classes was awesome because it was such a great turnout. And second, I'd like to, I, from my daughter, got, got personal feedback. I'm not sure if you guys know, but in the high school, I think in actual follow-up with some conversations because of you, Mr. Wall, they did a mix it up lunch. And my daughter raved about it and I'm just curious what you guys thought.
I thought personally it was very successful. I think people were pushed outside of their comfort zone. And I think definitely, you know, it's an event that we should continue in the future because I think that a lot of relationships were formed during the event.
Can, for those that aren't, that don't know, could you explain what the mix it up lunch was?
It was where we were like split into groups of like, all four grades were divided into groups of people like that we didn't know or like, maybe we did know. And we were kind of like, I guess forced to talk to each other, but it was nice. Like we were given like a list of questions and like, it was like a forced interaction, but like it ended up working out and like everyone had a good time.
They had like, they were assigned like emojis. And so like, if you were the fire emoji, you had to go sit at the fire table. And if you were, right, like that's how it was split up and it was random and you know, it was apparently worked out and you know, my daughter was like, once a month, this would be great. So that was a great, it was great.
I was going to say, I've heard mixed comments, to be quite honest. I mean, Jack and Iva Junior. But I think if you, it's always hard the first time, right? You know, first time doing something. So I think, you know, maybe do it again. It could be easier and get better. And you know, obviously people are going to eat, where they're going to eat, because that's just normal, right? You're going to be lower commons, upper commons in the library, whatever you're going to go. But I would do want to say something on the pizza thing. This is the first year I ever got to go and to me, like the Battle of Classes, like normally the things like we got wrestling going on right down the hall. We have basketball tomorrow night or Friday night. Those are always very tense, stressful events. I think these Battle of Classes, the Pizza Night, it's a great event. I just think the one thing we could do as a, as a district, especially like let the little guys know, let the village school, Indian Hill and Sats, let them know. I mean, they would have loved that Battle of Classes. Oh my God, the kids who were there lost, lost their minds. It's almost like Battle of Faculty. The town loves that. And more of those events are great because it brings the town together. And you know, it brings it in a stressed, you know, less stress environment under a great thing. And you know, kudos Mr. Dad being the MC. He did a great job. It was, I felt like I was watching like a cooking show. So it was good. But that's, I just wanted to say if we can advertise it more, just like the Relay for Life for Cancer thing coming up in, in May, I think it is, or during the baseball lacrosse season, that's another one. That's a great community event that get the mayor and everyone else saying, hey, we had this event in a few weeks. Come, please come to the event instead of just all these guys playing, you know, spike ball and walking around the track and selling out of mommies and whatever else they're going to sell. So thanks.
Thank you very much. I have two, two quick items. One, it's just as you're growing up, sometimes you're in a class or you're learning something, you say, what, what am I ever going to do with this, right? How's this going to impact my world moving forward? as you're growing up, sometimes you're in a class or you're learning something, you say, what, what am I ever gonna do with this, right? How's this gonna impact my world moving forward? Any of the adults in the room who have attended a networking event, a business conference, professional development, and you walk into a room and you're not quite acclimated, you know, for the folks that you just had, had, had this program, I learned that in high school. Basically being forced out of your comfort zone. There are adults that haven't engaged in networking events and, and just out of their comfort zone and they're forced to learn how to do as adults. So it's, it's not dissimilar where you're, where you're acclimating. So it, it's really, to me, it's a business networking tool. It's a personal networking tool. Expanding, expanding your level of contacts, whether it be personal, business or otherwise. So actually, there is an application far beyond the emoji, if you really think it through.
Well, my, my daughter was the only girl at her table. So like that was something even just completely different for her. Like she happened to end up with a table of all boys being the only girl. And considering she always sits with a bunch of girls, like that in itself, you know, and in this world of like your generation doesn't even text, like you literally just send photos of like the ceiling to one another. So like it's, you know, it's, it's, it's great.
Encourage all students, expand your networks, learn to expand your networks, enjoy expanding your networks and get out of your comfort zone. One last comment is you're the student representatives to the board and you give fantastic reports, but that title, that role can be far more expansive. I think the board would be very interested in the, your fellow students collectively sharing with you issues that matter. Everything you shared matters, but there may be other key issues that matter and things that the board may or may not be aware of or administration may not be as tuned into, maybe certain aspects of administration, but not others. So I would just encourage you to feel free to channel the collective interests and, and thoughts of your membership, your fellow students, you're the student representatives to the board. Feel free and comfortable sharing issues that concern you, that are working great or that may be able to work a little bit better. I'm just putting that out there to really even consider expanding the, the role that you have to help, help ensure that we keep Home Del Township Schools the best schools in the county. That would be wonderful. So thank you very much again for your report. We'll move on to, thank you again, the report of the Superintendent, Dr. Cascone. Thank you.
Thank you, President Wall. Just to start off, as per standard op, just want to share with you the enrollment, district enrollment. Village School as of January 31st, 818 students. That's down three students since October of 2000. I'm sorry, it's, it's up 10 students from October 15th of 2023. Indian Hill, as of January 31st, 2024, 623 students. That is zero increase from 2023. October 15th. SAT School is at 494. That's up one student from October of 2023. And the high school is at 967, up one student from 1015, 2023. It's up 14 students since 2023 and down 119 students since October of 2014. Okay, for my report, I just want to speak a little bit about a presentation that we had last Thursday, October 25th. Detective John McGuire and School Resource Officer Michael Nolan presented to a group of parents. We had, and thank you to all the parents and guardians who attended. We had a pretty good turnout, I would say between 30 and 40 parents that came in person to present on cyber safety, a number of important tips. That video of which was also shared via my letter. I'll continue to share that in the case you missed it section of the letter so that people can access that. And they will be continuing presenting student presentations at SAT School in the upcoming months. So thank you to our partners in Home Del Police Department. We continue to put in place interventions and education to try and you know, combat what we know is a, can be a problematic environment, digital environment for our students. So again, thank you to them and thank you to Vice President Damari, who also attended as a parent and as a board member. So really the lion's share of this superintendent's report is really just to provide some key updates regarding several of the 2023-24 district goals. District goal number one, which relates to implementing a systems-based positive behavioral student support program is in full swing as the district schools have embraced the Live Home Del Blue initiative. This initiative has four tenets: Be respectful, live responsibly, uphold fairness, and embrace citizenship. Mr. Howard and the District Culture and Climate Team have been in the process of evaluating various research-based character education programs for inclusion in classroom instruction and curriculum. This will ensure that the larger district and school cultural and climate norms are being reinforced consistently in the classrooms as well. The focus of next year will be intensive professional development for all teachers on the program with full implementation in the classroom as per the Strategic Action Plan in the 25-26 school year. Goal number two focuses on finalizing the research process with respect to aligning the middle and high school schedules, thereby creating a later start, later start time for the high school for implementation in September of 2024. Discuss publicly in previous conversations, the district has confirmed the feasibility of the revised start times for the district schools, most notably pushing the high school start time back to eight o'clock and aligning the SATS and high school schedules, including start and end times. The community sentiment for this change was positive, as evidenced by amongst other things, the feedback gathered at the public forum held early in the fall. The district is now in the process of solidifying additional details, including but not limited to any contractual modifications, which will need to be agreed upon with the Local Education Association, the sending out of transportation bids, as well as addressing traffic flow. Coincidentally, in the new business on this agenda, you will, you will note that the district's architects of record, Speel, actually I should say you will not note it on the agenda, but you will note that they are here tonight to speak under new business. Discussing with the board, the feasibility, feasibility study for the modification of the ingress and egress to the middle school and high school complex. And this feasibility study is utilizing the 2019 Traffic Study Commission by the Board of Education. And finally, with respect to goal five, which is to complete all goals and action steps outlined for completion in year one of the five-year strategic plan by June 2024. The district is preparing to launch a digital public-facing dashboard. This dashboard will provide real-time updates for the community on the status of the various action steps. At a forthcoming Board of Education meeting, the district administration and I will present a detailed report for the community on the status of year one initiatives. That concludes my report for the evening, Mr. President, which I respectfully submit into the record.
Thank you very much. May we have a report on HIB, item L, or did you?
Yes, sir. That, there is the report, which I submit into the record as presented in closed executive session.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much, guys. Have a great day. So now we're gonna open the meeting up to the public. This specific area is just on items on the agenda. There will be a, a second public comment period for items that are on the agenda or off the agenda. And so I'd like to open it up to the public at this time for any items that are physically on the agenda and the, the verbal ad that you had heard that ties to the road project that we'll be discussing shortly. If anybody would like to come up, the mic is yours. Seeing none? Still seeing none. Okay, thanks. We're going to move along and bear with me a moment because our agenda is a work in progress. We split certain items up that we're gonna discuss certain items that we're ready to move on and certain items that members are going to be speaking to, particularly fantastic retirements of our, of our valued staff. So I believe then we have for action items, I'm showing one through four. Item five is AI and I want to briefly discuss that and see if any folks have any questions on that. But if we were able to do item one through four, five set aside, six through 17, and that ends prior to resolutions for retirements that we'd like individual board members to read, very important. And then lastly, be items 23 through 46, I believe. Mr. Patrissi, are we on track here?
You should hold 44.
I'm sorry, did I, 44 is which item? I'm sorry.
Donation.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So we'll hold 44. Any others that the board wishes to hold? Okay, so then we'd be looking for a motion for one through four, six through 17, 23 through 46, excluding item 44 at this time.
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Damari?
Yes.
Mr. Ready?
Yes.
Dr. Kalur?
Yes.
Mrs. Tussello?
Yes, on all, but I need to abstain from number 16.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Mann?
Yes.
Mr. Levesque?
Yes.
Mrs. LaPresty?
Yes, but I need to abstain from 17.
Same here. I abstain for 17.
Okay, motion passes.
Sorry. Thank you very much. So on item five, ChatGPT bar AI, it's, it's already here. It's expanding tremendously by the minute. So to the extent that we have guidance, guardrails, disclosures and other policies set forth by the Board of Education in consultation with administration, this is my understanding. I don't know why. It should be in every district, but it's in very few, as I understand it, both for the education staff and also for the students. Dr. Cascone, would you mind reviewing the contours of this? And we'll have a separate vote on this very important AI policy. And I would certainly ask for the parents of the students and, and staff to please read it very carefully because this is a very, very important and rapidly changing field. Dr. Cascone?
Thank you, President Wall. Yes, so I think, you know, even just when you look at ChatGPT, it, it sort of, it was not here one day and then all of a sudden it was here. It almost, and that was of course not the case, but it just seemed to sort of just appear, right? We were surprised to find that, I'm not aware of any other public school district in the state of New Jersey that actually has developed a policy yet. There are others and we looked for guidance nationwide for policies that we could use sort of just to work off of and in at least three or four months ago when we started this research process, there were very few policies that we could find in K-12 institutions. You see them more commonly in higher ed. They've of course made it into the private sector. So this is really in New Jersey, K-12 education somewhat groundbreaking and I think somewhat needed. And I think we've, something we all agree, we're all coming at it from different places. But I think we all, whether it's students or teachers or administrators, I think we're all looking for some degree of guidance, right? Like, can I use it? Can I not? Can they use it? Can they not? If so, how, right? And that's really, I would argue, in a very mile-high view is really what this policy does, is really just to establish some overall guidelines for both students, staff and administration. It takes its cue primarily from what the US Department of Education published as the blueprint for an AI Bill of Rights. And those are really, those really are at the top of the, of the policy. And I'm not going to read them, but just a couple of examples are AI systems and tools respect data privacy and security. AI systems and tools must be inspectable and explainable and provide human alternatives to AI-based suggestions and where appropriate, require professional human judgment. Hetty stuff, obviously, but I think it'll be helpful for, for educators and students to like to know. And I think the, the, the overall idea is it's not a ban on AI. Right? More, rather, it's how do we harness that tool, but at the same time not have it replace the, the, the human, the human handprint, if you will. And that's really what this policy strives to do. Just a quick procedural note, this is a first reading of the policy. So all policies must go through two readings before they're ultimately approved and adopted by the board. So certainly we have a number of educators, professional educators in the room. We, you know, certainly encourage you to look at it and, you know, if you have feedback from that professional educator perspective, certainly happy to receive that and consider that. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much. And if you look for some quick hits, can it be utilized? Yes, within certain, certain, certain means and methods. The standards apply similarly to the students' staff. What does that mean in practical terms? If a student's utilizing AI, it's disclosed and it's cited appropriately. If the teacher or the educator is using it for lesson plans and others, it's also similarly cited and disclosed. So these items that to what extent are used now, but folks are not really clear how they can, should they, can they disclose it or not? Do they do it privately and not share with people that they're doing it? It shines a nice bright light on it with appropriate disclosures and it's fair to all folks that would be utilizing the technology. And with that, if the board would consider a motion to thank you very much. When we have roll call?
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Damari?
Yes.
Mr. Ready?
Yes.
Dr. Kalur?
Yes.
Mrs. Tussello?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Mann?
Yes.
Mr. Levesque?
Yes.
Mrs. LaPresty?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. That's Home Del, not just staying ahead of the curve, but creating the curve itself. So I appreciate that and the support of the board in that initiative. What we'd like to do now is very, very important is the acceptance of retirements. Item 18, Board Member right there. Want to start off for us?
Acceptance of Retirement Physical Education Teacher Indian Hill School, whereas Mr. Christopher Wagner has served the Home Del Township Public Schools with distinction since January 22nd, 1997. And whereas Mr. Wagner has faithfully executed his duties with skill and competency. And whereas Mr. Wagner has earned the respect of his colleagues and community residents. And whereas Mr. Wagner has submitted a letter announcing his retirement from the Home Del Township School District effective February 1st, 2024. Now therefore be it resolved that the Home Del Township Board of Education accepts Mr. Wagner's retirement with deep gratitude for Mr. Wagner's dedication, loyalty and outstanding services performed, performed. And further extend to Mr. Wagner its best wishes for a happy and healthy retirement.
Motion?
Move.
Second? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wall?
Yes, congratulations.
Mr. Damari?
Yes, congratulations.
Mr. Ready?
Yes, congrats.
Dr. Kalur?
Yes, congratulations.
Mrs. Tussello?
Yes, congratulations.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes, congratulations.
Mr. Mann?
Yes, enjoy retirement. Congratulations.
Mr. Levesque?
Yes, congratulations.
Mrs. LaPresty?
Yes, thank you and congrats.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. And thank you for reading that, Board Member LaPresty. Board Member Levesque, would you kindly read item 19?
Acceptance of Retirement Elementary Teacher Village School, whereas Ms. Rebecca Waddell has served the Home Del Township Public Schools with distinction since January 4th, 1998. And whereas Ms. Waddell has faithfully executed her duties with skill and competency. And whereas Ms. Waddell, hope I'm saying that right, Waddell, Waddell? Waddell, thank you. Sorry about that. Ms. Waddell has earned the respect of her colleagues and community residents. And whereas Ms. Waddell has submitted a letter announcing her retirement for the, from the Home Del Township School District effective July 1st, 2024. Now therefore be it resolved that the Home Del Township Board of Education accepts Ms. Waddell's retirement with deep gratitude for Ms. Waddell's dedication, loyalty and outstanding services performed and further extend to Ms. Waddell's, it's, Waddell, its best wishes for a happy and healthy retirement.
Remember a motion, please?
Move.
Roll call?
Mr. Wall?
Yes, congratulations.
Mr. Damari?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Ready?
Yes, enjoy retirement.
Dr. Kalur?
Yes, thank you.
Mrs. Tussello?
Yes, congratulations.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes, congratulations.
Mr. Mann?
Yes, congratulations.
Mr. Levesque?
Yes, enjoy and congratulations.
Mrs. LaPresty?
Yes, thank you and congrats.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Board Member Buckley, would you be kind enough to read? Board Member Mann, master delegator.
If you don't mind, I'd like to read.
Yes, oh, please, thank you. Thank you.
Whereas Mr. Michael Kelly has served the Home Del Township Public Schools with distinction since September 1st, 1998. And whereas Mr. Kelly has faithfully executed his duties with skill and competency and Mr. Kelly has earned the respect of his colleagues and community residents. And Mr. Kelly has submitted a letter announcing his retirement from the Home Del Township School District effective July 1st, 2024. Be it resolved that the Home Del Township Board of Ed accept Mr. Kelly's retirement with deep gratitude for Mr. Kelly's dedication, loyalty and outstanding services performed and further extends to Mr. Kelly its best wishes for a happy, healthy retirement. He is one of the good ones. We're losing him. Mike Kelly.
Well said. When they have a motion, please?
Move. Second?
Roll call, please.
Mr. Wall?
Yes, congratulations.
Mr. Damari?
Yes, congratulations.
Mr. Ready?
Yes, and like Jeff said, Mr. Kelly's been here 26 years and he's a Marine. So any of the one, people in the audience don't know, usually I, I go to Veterans Day every year when
So any of the one people in the audience don't know, usually I I go to Veterans Day every year when uh, Lisa has it every year and uh, he keeps it on the down low, but uh, it I respect him a lot and uh, he'll definitely be missed. Good man. Thank, yes.
Dr. Calor.
Yes, congratulations.
Mrs. Tissello.
Yes, congratulations.
Mr. Buckley.
Yes, congratulations.
Mr. Mann.
Yes, congratulations. Enjoy retirement.
Mr. Labachi.
Yes, congratulations.
Mrs. La Presley.
Yes, thank you and congrats.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And for the folks that are working here every day, they know if without our uh, our custodial staff, operations can grind to a halt, and we honor and appreciate all their critical work in the operations of Homedale Township School District. Mr. Ready, board member Ready, would you kind enough kindly uh, read uh, acceptance of retirement, item twenty-one?
Item twenty-one, acceptance of retirement, custodian WR SAT School. Whereas Mr. Franklin Carter has served the Homedale Township Public Schools with distinction since February fourteenth, two thousand two. And whereas Mr. Carter has faithfully executed his duties with skill and competency. And whereas Mr. Carter has earned respect of his colleagues and community residents. And whereas Mr. Carter has submitted a letter announcing his retirement from the Homedale Township School District effective February first, two thousand twenty-four. Now therefore be it resolved that the Homedale Township Board of Education accept Mr. Carter's retirement with deep gratitude for Mr. Carter's dedication, loyalty and outstanding services performed. And further extend to Mr. Carter its best wishes for a happy and healthy retirement.
Thank you very much. Remember a motion, please.
Motion?
Roll call, please.
Mr. Wall.
Yes, congratulations.
Mr. Damari.
Yes, congratulations.
Mr. Ready.
Yes, uh, I got to know Franklin over the last ten years sitting up here and a really good man, uh, definitely be missed, always had a smile. Always showed up, always getting the stuff. I mean, like Terrence said, the schools are always spotless, and he's one of the reasons why, you know, one of Steve Rogers' guys and Ken Stromland's guys, uh, he'll be missed. I didn't realize it's tomorrow. You know, he's done. Uh, so congratulations Franklin, uh, enjoy.
Dr. Calor.
Yes, congratulations.
Mrs. Tissello.
Yes, enjoy entire retirement.
Mr. Buckley.
Yes, congratulations. Enjoy your retirement. I've actually known Frank since I'm a young kid, and you'd be hard-pressed to your point to find a more positive attitude than Frank has. Really, really solid guy.
Mr. Mann.
Yes, thank you. Congratulations.
Mr. Labachi.
Yes, thank you. Congratulations.
Mrs. La Presley.
Yes, thank you and congratulations.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And we we'd be remiss if we didn't thank all our power professionals that help power the district through uh, each and every day when as our children are learning and growing. Would uh, uh, for Vice President Damari, please uh, read the item twenty-two, acceptance of retirement for Deborah Casella, please.
Sure. Acceptance of retirement, power professional village school, whereas Ms. Deborah Casella has served the Homedale Township Public Schools with distinction since September first, two thousand fourteen. And whereas Ms. Casella has faithfully executed her duties with skill and competency. And whereas Ms. Casella has earned the respect of her colleagues and community residents. And whereas Ms. Casella has submitted a letter announcing her retirement from the Homedale Township School District effective July first, twenty twenty-four. Now therefore be it resolved that the Homedale Township Board of Education accepts Ms. Casella's retirement with deep gratitude for Ms. Casella's dedication, loyalty and outstanding services performed, and further extend to Ms. Casella's its best wishes for a happy and healthy retirement.
Thank you very much for that. May we have a motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Wall.
Yes, congratulations.
Mr. Damari.
Yes, congratulations.
Mr. Ready.
Yes.
Dr. Calor.
Yes, congratulations.
Mrs. Tissello.
Yes, congratulations.
Mr. Buckley.
Yes, congratulations.
Mr. Mann.
Yes, thank you. Congratulations.
Mr. Labachi.
Yes, congratulations.
Mrs. La Presley.
Yes, congratulations.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. I'd like to ask board member Tissello, if you'd kindly read item forty-four, which is certainly in your wheelhouse as a softball family. It gets real close there. It's a fantastic donation from the Home to High School Diamond Club. If you kindly read that result resolution.
Thank you. Acceptance of non-monetary donation from the home, home, Homedale High School Diamond Club. Resolve that the board accept with gratitude a non-monetary donation from the Homedale High School Diamond Club of a junior hack attack baseball pitching machine at a cost not to exceed two thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Thank you very much. Maybe we have a motion, please.
Move.
Roll call?
Mr. Wall.
Yes, thank you very much.
Mr. Damari.
Yes, thank you and congratulations.
Mr. Ready.
Yes, this one's a good thing. Uh, I have a son that plays on the baseball team, and I can tell you, they had the net up in the uh, high school gym where they're doing wrestling right now, and they could put their net up in five minutes. So I, during these cold winter months, this thing will come in handy because you can never get enough hitting. So thank you very much.
Dr. Calor.
Yes, thank you very much.
Mrs. Tissello.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Buckley.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Mann.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Labachi.
Yes, thank you.
Mrs. La Presley.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe that concludes the main items of business, but I'd like to just welcome on behalf of the Board of Education, uh, John Venturi as our new physical education teacher who's a uh, was uh, approved this evening, as well as Casey Schulhafer, nurse for the SAT School, who is also approved this evening. I want to welcome them uh, to the Homedale School District, and we appreciate your efforts for our children moving forward. I also like to thank Denise King and her team. We did uh, approve a settlement this evening. Um, and uh, thank you for your patience. As things go over the arc of time, sometimes it uh, zigs, sometimes it zags a little bit, but that item was approved this evening as well. So thank you to you and your team who may be here as well as we move forward in partnership for the betterment of the schools and the education of the children. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Um, so moving on, we are, I think that this probably would be an appropriate time for the presentation that we referenced earlier, or the discussion, I should say, for the, unless I'm missing a piece, for the ingress and egress of SATs and the high school. For the families that are familiar with it, you don't, you probably don't need to hear anything more, uh, but let's have the folks come up from the team and um, from prior experience, my recommendation would be keep it tight. Have a strong beginning, a strong end and close together. Okay? So that would be great. And uh, then we're going to open up to any board questions, and there's also a portion for the public in a little bit. Uh, feel free to uh, you know, come up in a little bit. So take the floor away. Why are you here? What are the parameters? What are you thinking about? What are your recommendations? And then uh, we're going to be taking the information and that we're learning today or learning again today and partnering with the Homedale Township Committee in the hopes of having a program on the two thousand and twenty-four capital budget uh, program in time for the budget process, which for the township, for folks who are not aware, they need to introduce by March twenty-ninth or the approximate date uh, after that. Uh, these things happen very quickly, and once the capital budget is set, it's done. So that is why, why is this in January? This is the reason why, because we want to meet certain timeframes. So any of the work and all the work is done and completed before children go back to school September of two thousand twenty-four. Thank you very much. The floor is yours. Have a great night, everybody. I guess they're not that interested in getting into the buildings anymore. Why not?
That's Indian Hill.
Oh, yeah, all right. Thank you very much. We appreciate all all that you do for our kids. Okay, fair enough. Thank you very much. Welcome. Go jump into it. Yep. I'm sorry, can you be close to the microphone or grab the microphone? Because many folks, we're also streaming live and it and it, we archive the video. So folks can go back and refer to it. I've also recommended that the staff at at Homedale Township also either listen in or listen to it afterwards. So I want to make sure that you're on the record.
All right. Uh, my name is Alka Panchal. I'm a project manager. Uh, at Beadle Architectural Group.
Trevor Taylor, principal from CME Associates.
All right, so um, sounds like everyone in this room is aware of the existing issue that we have associated with the traffic pattern on the high school and middle school campus, which is basically this property, and its impact on the access road, which is Crawford's Corner Road, which is mainly the only access to this campus.
Nice and loud, project, if you don't mind. Appreciate it.
Right. Um, so with that, uh, we discussed the existing concerns and uh, you know, we have offered uh, the district officials with uh, what we could help with uh, you know, to to move this process forward, because it is my understanding that uh, it's something that uh, the district is considering to to address, uh, you know, as soon as possible. Uh, we have our uh, engineer, uh, Trevor's, Trevor's with me today. You know, he has, he has studied the report that was provided to us, um, you know, uh, which was done, I think it was in two thousand nineteen, which was before the pandemic, which was very helpful. It it outlines the existing, you know, side conditions and the problems that were identified during the report. Uh, so which was very helpful. We have come up with a short summary of the scope of work that we would be providing uh, as part of the feasibility study that that we're planning to conduct. Uh, we will also be providing, you know, possible recommendations to to rectify this issue and a cost analysis associated with that for the Board of Education and the Townships review. And I'll let Trevor just go over the scope.
And Trevor, you're a civil engineer, correct?
I'm a civil engineer, yes.
And you're familiar with the 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 scope of services here?
Yes, I am.
And you reviewed the street, the you reviewed the ingress and egress?
Yes.
All right, great. Go ahead. Thanks.
Uh, so I did review the two thousand nineteen Dolan and Dean report that was commissioned by the board. Uh, they've offered a couple of recommendations in that report at the intersections of Long Street Road and the school entrance. Uh, at Crawford's Corner Road, also at South Holland Road and Crawford's Corner Road, as well as widening of Crawford's Corner Road. So our proposed scope is to review those concepts, uh, meet with the board, see if there's any changes since two thousand nineteen. Identify any additional concepts that we may feel necessary based on that meeting. Uh, come up with GIS concept plan. So basically take the recommendations in the report, put it on paper with uh, some recommendations uh, as far as a detail of whatever improvements are proposed. Put a cost estimate together for each of those improvements, send that back to the board to take a look at, and then meet with the township administrator committee, whomever we have to meet with at the at the township level to review the proposed improvements and work it into their capital plan two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, if you can drill into the specifics, what have you seen so far? But we're familiar with all of that. We're kind of beyond that part. We want to, what do you see out there?
So right now at uh, South Holland Road and Crawford's Corner Road is the no turn on red between seven AM and eight AM. Uh, not exactly sure why that was implemented in the past, but um, one of the recommendations was to remove that. Um, the second uh, proposal is to modify the traffic signal at the school entrance with Crawford's Corner Road. Uh, additional lanes that can be proposed to come in and out of the school. Also, the additional left-hand turn lane. Currently, there are left-hand turn lanes on Crawford's Corner Road, uh, but not coming into and out of the school or or a long street road. So the recommendation is to add additional lanes out there as well as exclusive left-hand turn arrow phases, so that when you come into the school, uh, you have an exclusive left-hand turn phase in and out of.
You mean what, west to east?
Uh, correct. Actually, that's uh, south, south to north, coming in and out of the school. Um, and then lastly is widening Crawford's Corner Road for the, for an additional lane, so that you have an exclusive left-hand turn lane into the three entrances and exits to both the high school and the middle school. Uh, those were the recommendations. Another thing that we looked at is also widening the road between South Holland Road and uh, the school entrance to uh, put an additional right-hand turn lane, exclusive lane into the school. So you have a right-hand turn, a through, a through lane and a left-hand turn lane onto Long Street. That's another thing that uh, wasn't in the report, but when we looked at the report, we thought that may be a good idea to add that as well.
Okay, so there the police, the Homedale Police Department and all their, all their vehicles are on that same road. The home, uh, Homedale Fire Company is also on that same road. That is the main roadway to get through right now. Uh, in the event of, have you been there during traffic time during school pickup and drop-off?
I've been through the area several times, but I've not been there during pickup.
So for the, so for the entire community, not just the, that folks come to Homedale for their schools. They come for safety, they come for the schools and the open spaces, but for generally entire community that touches the schools, but also folks that are commuting, going to the art center to catch a bus, police going to an emergency call, uh, some stroke, fire doubling every six seconds. When that road is congested, that's the only thoroughfare. What's the impact of that traffic on that call? It's a loaded question. It's a pop quiz, but I, we know the answer, but I want to hear your thoughts as a, you're a traffic engineer, yeah?
Uh, I I deal with traffic. We have a traffic department that would handle this.
So when when you're looking at traffic intersection improvements for a school district that are immediately proximate to a police department, a first aid building, emergency services, what are some of the special circumstances that a municipality might look, look at?
Um, so you can uh, put uh, preemption on the traffic signals that if an ambulance or fire truck or police does come, they can hit the siren and and the light will change for them. Um, that's typically what we see at newer uh, intersections for for uh, emergency vehicles. Uh, with the additional of a lane, you know, obviously there's more, there's a wider roadway so that the vehicles can get through if there is a backup uh, in uh, you know, each quadrant of the intersection. Um, and then, of course, if there's a new roadway we could look at um, to get into the school, potentially, we can take a look at that as well. If it's, you know, that's going to have an impact with the emergency vehicles.
And coming towards um, from, you have my compass reoriented here, but coming towards the high school where you would take a right to turn into the school, have you looked at, yeah, you may not have, looked at a, a um, uh, just a curve right into it as opposed to having to go to the intersection? The the district has certain amounts of land available to it, so the um, uh, easements and um, you know, eminent domain's not an issue. These kinds of things are not a concern. Have you looked at, uh, I don't, I'm not clear if it's in that plan, but a uh, just veering right, right into the, into the facility? Have you looked at that?
Uh, before the traffic signal, if you're coming from South Holland or just?
Correct.
Uh, yes, that's one thing that we uh, could take a look at. We've not looked at it yet, but definitely something we can take a look at. There is the county culvert. That's between South Holland and the traffic signal, so we want to take a look at that and how that would impact that road. But it's, I I believe there's enough room between that culvert and the traffic signal to add a lane and potentially a separate driveway, uh, just for that.
And I, one other item, and I'm going to shock you, I'm going to be quiet, because I want to open it up to the board to see the folks are traveling in and out of the district, employees are coming in and out of the district. When you're in Rogate, when you, when you're in the school within the complex, not the more the municipal side that would impact police, fire, first aid, emergency services, commuters, um, from not just Homedale, but you know, across the region. Cars stop, there's, they stack on the road, children getting out, intersections between pedestrians, children and cars that are going around, other cars that are parked, dropping off their, the the kids for sports, uh, and as much as, you know, folks mainly know you shouldn't, they do. Um, have you looked at or is, do you have any input on uh, essentially a, a, a drop-off to space providing, providing that space, a drop-off lane? So, so cars, vehicles can safely pull to the right, so maybe it's ten or twelve, whatever that amount may be. So you can safely drop off children that are going immediately onto the field. Are you familiar with that issue? And do you have any thoughts about that type of discussion?
So there was a proposed circulation plan in the two thousand nineteen plan with a couple of modifications. We plan on looking at that and see if there's other recommendations we can come up with uh, in addition to what was proposed. Uh, the original proposal was to bring uh, at least bus traffic into the, I'm going to call it the western driveway as opposed to now, the middle driveway is the ingress and the western driveway is the egress. There is discussing, discussion of taking a look at that and running everyone around the building. Uh, but again, it's open for our review. We haven't really reviewed everything in detail yet, but it's something that we plan on looking at and coming up with other recommendations for drop-off for both the middle school and the high school.
And based on your assessment so far, is there a problem there or not a problem?
Uh, the problem that I see is students, especially at the middle school, have to cross what appears to be the bus lane from the parking lot uh, based on the signage and the crosswalks out there to get into the entrance that, at the middle school. Um, and the other, the other issue is, uh, I believe at the high school, it appears that people are are coming through the uh, parking lot in certain areas. There was a recommendation to barricade um, the, the drive aisles in the high school parking lot. So again, we'll take a look at that, and if there's something else that we can come up with, we'll definitely present it to the board.
Thanks. And part of the reason you're here is to speak, but it's also to listen. So if I may, I'd like to open it up to the, to the staff that comes in and out of here every day. Uh, maybe Mr. Patrissio or Dr. Kascón, if you have any inputs at all, please share them, because you're living in that, in this world every day. The parents are coming in and, you know, dropping off and that kind of thing in the buses. And then I'd like to open it up to the board. Would you have any particular inputs from your travels over time of areas and or hotspots that you think might find some needed improvement, putting costs aside? And uh, and then Dr. Kascón and then the board.
No, I I mean, I think it's been captured. I think the the report that was done in two thousand nineteen was pretty detailed. Um, I I think it's good to get a fresh lens on ideas. I I know administration has tried to work on tweaking some workflow of of um, activity in and out, but uh, I think a fresh uh, lens is worth uh, looking at right now. Um, it's clearly a challenge as you've uh, definitely laid out, uh, Mr. Wall, but um, I think it, I don't have any further comments that hasn't already been expressed.
Thank you. Dr. Kascón and then the full board.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. I would echo Mr. Patrissio and just, I think just for the, you know, it's probably been stated before, but it's worth repeating that. Again, as I mentioned. Again, as I mentioned before, this initiative that we're moving forward with next year in combining the start times. There will need to be some form of intervention to address the increased volume. This is obviously the most long, you know, this is a long-term solution. So this is something that we can accomplish for September. That's ideal. I mean, there's other things we can do to address the volume, but this is certainly the most, most ideal.
Thank you. I'd like to open it up to the board for any input from your own experience or what you may hear from parents or others in regard to this particular item.
Terrence, I can talk, I, you know, I remember two thousand nineteen I was here. I don't think we should have paid for that study in two thousand nineteen, and I certainly don't, I'm not pleased to be paying the same amount of money again. Five years later, tell me something I already know. It's not your guys' fault. This, this, this is a good conversation we're having because hopefully the township is listening. Because anything we do, and I've sat here and I know there's people in the audience that have sat here for well over a decade, that anything we do to the traffic light, the traffic signal, if we want to change the programming, if we want to add a new signal, if we want to cut the road, we don't own any of those things. Once we go off that curb, we do not own any of these things. So if anything, T N, T N M associates, I think might still be the town engineer, they definitely should be within this conversation. In addition to the township administrator, the D P Victor Stevens, D P W director, all those guys absolutely, because the, the report I think was really well done. I mean, Dolan and Dolan did a nice job a few, you know, a few years back, very in-depth that, you know, obviously that there's tro points at seven thirty and at two thirty, we know this. And like Terrence says, at seven thirty, everybody and their mother is going to Bellworks and, you know, to Manalapan and everywhere, you know, on that one little lane, one lane each way. I mean, ideally, people said, why is that, that you said, why is that sign there? Why is that right on red? We've been asking that thing for years, but we can't remove that sign. I don't even think the town can remove that sign because I don't, isn't that like a county road or? There, there's a lot of county and township involvement that needs to happen. And we have seven months before September. I'd bet big that we don't get all these improvements done by then. I'm, I'd love to see it. I just know how long things take. I know this is going to have to go to the county and get all those approvals. And they have how many other projects within the county? Are they going to put their money here? I don't know. I mean, those are the conversations we'll have. I'm glad we're having.
Well, I think you touched on a, I, I think a very, very important point is that if it's aspirational or not. I've spoken to folks in the county. While that's not a county road, they're very much interested in safe traversing of the, the folks that are, whether it's commuting or otherwise, or, or parents. They're very interested in facilitating the dialogue or, or to, to, to what extent there may be funding available. I can't speak to that at all, but just putting that out there. So can you speak to like what a Gantcharc looks like? What would you, you intersect with municipalities from time to time? You're, you're working CME, you're, you're subbing this particular piece out to CME. So you do a lot of, I'm very familiar with your company. What, how? If the financing piece was settled and the, there was a partnership, a collaboration positive on where was, where there was a desire to expedite the program. The, it was design, right? Design, bid, construction, inspection, punch list, period, right? How, what would the arc of time be, as, as you know it, calendar year budgets, capital twenty twenty-four? You have a many, many clients that you're working on this right now on their capital budget. What is the possibility of a project being concluded if all the gears work right, which is, that's aspirational, but if they did work right? You have bonds, you have stopple periods, things of that nature where you can open bids when you can't. Can you speak to that? Speak to board member Reddy's, I think legitimate inputs on that?
Sure. So typically, once a municipality adopts a budget, it takes two meetings typically to adopt the budget. They have to go out the bid, which typically takes forty-five to sixty days to bid a project, award a project, then it goes to construction. I think the big thing with this is that there's going to be utility pole relocations, which I think in order to widen that intersection is going to require a relocation of at least one or two utility poles.
Okay.
That's up to the schedule. You know, we push P, it's probably JCPN L or Verizon to move those utility poles as expeditiously as possible. Sometimes it takes months for them to even come out to take a look at a relocating pole. So I would say if you want to do something like eliminate the no turn on red, change a signal, you know, anything that doesn't require modifying that intersection and pushing utilities out, it's something that could probably be done by the start of school next year. If it's something that requires extensive utility relocation, if the county is involved, they're both township roads, so I'm not sure why the county would be involved. I, I know they do own that culvert. Again, that's, that's just outside of the property. If the county has some sort of input into it, obviously that adds time to any approval process for the signaling.
I think more they're just supportive of all fifty-three municipalities, of which we're one of them. So you see, do you see phasing? If so, what, what, what are the contours of phasing that you see?
Sure. So you could phase it and do, like I said, if, if interim improvement is to modify.
I'm sorry, Dr. Kaler, can you mute? Go ahead. Thanks.
Sorry. So for instance, eliminating the right turn on red and putting an arrow on that signal to allow people to make a right-hand turn while people are turning left. That's something that could possibly be done by September two thousand twenty-four. I think putting a new signal in there, widening the road, relocating utilities is, that's a far-fetched project for two thousand twenty-four.
Fair enough. Other, we remember to sit on.
So I think that, so the first thought is that in two thousand nineteen, when this was first done, Bellworks was not what it is today. So I think that it could actually dramatically look different because that's just added traffic. And secondly, I believe the right on red, this is from my own memory, was put there because what was happening was Crawford's Corner was completely backed up. Like the lights don't, the two lights, even though they're close, they, they don't communicate with each other, right? So that was completely backed up. And people were making a right on red when other cars on Crawford's Corner were in the middle of the intersection in line as it was. And so then they just stopped the, the right on red because I think there was accidents there and things like that because people were trying to maneuver themselves. Thirdly, I'd like to say that, and I've said this like multiple times, just for your knowledge, when you, you know, when we're redoing all of this process, is that like one magical day, that light for South Holland and Crawford's Corner was a blinking yellow. And like it alleviated a lot, just that. So, because there was no right on red, because it was just a blinking yellow. So something even as simple as that, you know, really made a difference. So that's it.
Thank you. Traffic signals have come a long way over the past five to 10 years, even since this report has been done. You can put video cameras. I think there is one camera up there now, but you can fully video camera the entire intersection. You can make the two signals talk to each other, which obviously I think that's key to make them work together so that, you know, if people are making a turn, a right turn on red, it's, it's when the other light is, is not red. So you're stopping people who are making the right turn on red. You know, stopping that signal before they can move on. So there are definitely things that could be done with the traffic signals to improve the entire circulation. But again, that's more of a, probably a long-term project than a short phased interim project.
Thank you.
This is definitely not my area of expertise, but I mean, I would assume that like utility poles and Verizon, all those kinds of things can be moved during the school year. But the construction of the road, I feel like would have to be done in the summer, right? Or when school's out of session. Is that possible to finish the construction part of it in a summer timeframe or? Again, I have no basis for.
Yeah, it definitely obviously depends on the extent of the roadway widening and, you know, again, utilities. If we have to widen the road, it requires more than one utility pole or suppose a storm sur that had to be relocated. Sometimes that stuff can be done while school's in session. You have to work around the school hours, obviously. But when they're paving the road, excavating the road, things like that, we'd want to get that done in July and August. And that would be part of a phasing plan for the contractor when they ultimately start the project. To make sure that anything that's going to have a significant impact on the school is phased such so that it's done July and August.
And you could do your phasing and your timing in the bid. So if a contractor is not capable of meeting the specs, then don't bid. And you may get a no bid, you know, so could you, more board member LePressey, more on that?
Yep, that was it.
Anybody else?
One thing I was going to say, Terrence, is years ago, we looked at putting a new traffic signal out there. It was insane amount of money. I'm talking well over six, high six figures. Then we looked at just reprogramming the light. Sounds simple to me. It's reprogramming a computer. It's a traffic light, it's blue, you know, green, yellow, red. That was quite expensive. But again, these were not our decisions to make. We do not own that light. We do not own that street. So literally our, our conversations basically fell on deaf ears. And here we are, same problem that's been here for a decade. So it'd be good to get it fixed. And I think unfortunately, I don't want to say unfortunately, but moving the start times might actually force some action to happen. Because it could be an absolute disaster there come September. And people are like, oh my God, we got to go to something, which is the way you want it to be, but sometimes reactive, you know.
Yeah. So what I'll do quick, just for all the folks here listening or watching and also the, the folks that have been kind enough to come down here. I'm going to, I'm going to read quickly a proposal by the folks here. And so it's on the record. And then the board can, for example, get some consensus or any inputs of moving forward or authorizing it if in the event it's deemed from this meeting that it's in order or parts of it are in order. Some of these items frankly, four and on, I'm interested in, one, two and three. I, I, to, to board member Reddy's point, we've already, we've already, this is old territory. So we're not really interested in, in certain things that are already done, but, but this is a little bit new to you or coming back to it, just to be fair. So there's a lump sum fee considered of nineteen thousand five hundred. Well, what is that? I'm going to rip through these. It's reviewing the previous traffic report, identify talking points to discuss with the B O E. I think we just did that. Meet with the B O E to review the previous traffic report, discussing the physical changes and modifications to the circulation plan that have since been implemented, discuss any other options or suggestions that have been recommended in the past. Three, discuss with the B A if any township capital improvements are proposed for the two signalized interest intersections. Like what, what do you have planned? What do you have planned already? For example, let's not have redundancy here. Attend the meeting with township if necessary, of course. Four, prepare concept sketches. That's when it starts getting real and it starts to matter. Traffic signal improvements to the intersection of Crawford's Corner, Long Street Road, High School Entrance. Traffic signal improvements to the intersection of Crawford's Corner, South Holland. Rotary improvements to Crawford's Corner Road, parking lot modifications, circulation improvements to the school driveways and circulation roads. Prepare cost estimates, you know, budget estimates for project costs for these concepts. And prepare a letter summary to the B O E, including descriptions of each of the improvements that are being contemplated. So that's the rough scope of services for a lump sum. What, then you bill that to, we have, you have your, your rate? You have a rate for your engineers and your staff and your, there's a separate rate sheet or was that, or was it?
So in a formal proposal, we typically include that, but majority of the services that we are, we are, you know, planning to provide as part of this study is included in there. So it's, it's just if there's any, any additional meetings.
Okay, that's fine. I'm getting into a little of the weeds a little bit because I work with some of these items from time to time or all the time. So that general framework, does that pass muster with the board in the event there's a, a, an indication to go forward? Can we just get?
That's for me. I have one quick question too. And again, certainly not my area either of expertise, but I, I hear a lot about the traffic. What about underground? Like drainage and, you know, I guess infrastructure for, for handling that sort of stuff. Is that?
Right.
Could be addressed to?
Right. So that's where the utility of related time contingency that Trevor just discussed, and I, I'll give it to him to discuss that further. But that's something we really have to survey and analyze and see if we're not impacting any of that. And we, we, we do plan on discussing all that with the township to make sure we come up with the efficient, you know, proposal here to, to make it time sensitive as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Terrence, I think if we approve this now with no approval from the town or sense of buy-in, I'm going to have another nineteen thousand dollar study like they have right in front of them, unfortunately. Just because we don't hold the cards in this one, you know, I want to, and I think if we could be loud, it could be helpful to us, but I don't, I, I would, I'm a no if, unless, you know, I'd rather them, hey, send this to the town, be like, look, you know, can you, can you pay for this?
I was going to say, can you share the cost?
At least share the cost. If not, this is your roads. These are the town roads. We don't.
We have such little say.
Correct. So that would be my feeling. Like I think this is great because I think this is actually real, right? We're looking back at it again and, you know, we use enough reference from two thousand eighteen, which is probably hasn't changed, to be honest. I mean, if anything, our attendance has gone up slightly in the last five years, I believe, but nothing like crazy. I think the Bellworks definitely did not have that amount of traffic five years ago at all. I mean, Bellworks is probably quadruple, if not more, amount of cars going back and forth, coming off one, one sixteen, cutting through than they did previously. But yeah, I would like the town to at least, if they're not aware of it already.
They're aware.
Thank you.
And I, I'll share that. And this is certainly no fault of the current township committee. We are managing a, a upwards of twenty million dollars and growing revenue deficit through the pilot structure. That's legislative structure. The, the township committee works within the current legislative structure unless there's a separate fee ordinance. So this is certainly not a reflection of the current township committee. We have a structural imbalance financially, not on paper in that sense, because we manage the budgets of since two thousand eighteen of approximately twenty million dollars and growing. It's not sustainable. So that's a separate issue from, from a budget perspective. And so certainly if things, and, and let me just say to the positive, very productive, very positive conversations that we're navigating with this particular item, it's essentially if there's an element that's needed or required. That's why it's in the open, transparent, that the board was comfortable moving ahead in the event that any aspect, all aspects or any aspect, to me, I'm more four through nine, not one through three. I think we just accomplished one through three. We're not looking to go over all territory. We're not looking to have redundancies. We're not looking to go, go over, you know, news that we're already familiar with. We want to get to the point where unless there's something that from a design perspective, from the professional civil engineering perspective, that is, doesn't make sense to build and be done with it and move on and talk about other things. So the kids can get in and out of schools, police, police can get to their calls, the fire car department could put out fires. And if, and make sure that A, your kids aren't late to school. And if mom or dad need to get on that bus, that they don't miss it again. Period. And we do have the room, we have the space and we could accommodate it. The easiest thing to do is nothing. The easiest thing to do is not even talking about it. The easiest thing to do is just move on to the next thing. And that's precisely the problem with boards of education across the state. Doing nothing, to be honest, my opinion on that. And I think this is where that does things. You just saw A I pass, one of the first districts in the state. So to your point, no, we don't want to spend a dime because there, there are arguments that say it's simply not a board project. That said, I think we have good partnership and great conversations with members of the township committee. But to the extent that we may want certain elements done on a proprietary basis as opposed to a township basis, there may be certain elements and nuances that are, for example, within the campus, like Rogie or some other circulation elements that really aren't necessarily municipal related. And those are items that we probably arguably would own. So there may be a modified proposal that you're coming in here somewhat blind. You're doing your best and we appreciate that. But there may be a modified proposal that to come, but the basic, the basic concept here is to put it in front of the board. How do you feel? And are you comfortable at least the majority of board members from consensus to, to, you know, unshackle administration to carry forward as they, as they think they need to, taking into account all the thoughts and concerns that were present during this meeting tonight? That's the question before. If do, I'll just go, Kim?
Are we asked, so are you asking if I'm willing to do the whole nineteen five?
Given the authority from zero to nineteen five, yeah.
I, I think we ask for half first and then I'm okay with, but I'm, yes, I think it just needs to be done to put more pressure on them.
Okay, that, let's go this way. Board member LePressey?
I agree. I mean, I just think the township should share at least fifty, but I think I agree with Tim, uh, Kim and that it should, just needs to get done.
Fair enough.
Uh, I think we should ask for the whole thing, quite frankly, but I think we settle for what we can get. If we could get half, that'd be great, but I'd like to ask for all of it first.
Fair enough. Board member Buckley?
Obviously it's public record, but you always ask for more, settle for less. So hopefully the township doesn't watch this and see under the tent.
I'm anticipating the township committee to do the right thing here, but, and that's why we're having this open conversation.
Get them on the river.
You're representing your constituents, you're representing the community. And so your views would ostensibly be the views of your constituents, which are the taxpayers that are here and the, and, and the staff that has to, you know, traverse in and out of the buildings. So they need to hear it. So your points are well taken.
Just a question, this, this, I guess might be silly. The majority of the volume that I see, because I, you know, I travel from home to Bellworks to drop the kids off. It's, it's the, the parents dropping the kids off. And there's, I guess there's no way to limit that. I mean, you see the buses, they're empty. It's, it's the volume of the car traffic that's caused.
Here, it's also the kids driving themselves.
Correct. Yeah. So it's a little bit different on this side. Right.
Piece of it.
But there's, there's no way to limit that, right? I mean, to police that would be a huge feat, right?
Well, Dr. Cascione could probably speak to, to what extent do you think the new paradigm would result in a higher volume of students that say, you know what? That timing is just right for me. That works. I'm in that bus. And on the new routes that we're bidding, we're bidding right now.
I mean, it's, you know, it's, it would be, it's hypothetical, but I think for one, we can absolutely predict that the buses will definitely be more full. And I think part of the, what contributes to the drop offs is the fact that kids are scrambling to get out the door and miss the bus, right? So if the bus is arriving at a more reasonable time, that could lead to more students taking the bus. Just something that, you know, actually to. Just something that, you know, actually tomorrow we're, we're meeting with the, with the township. A police department to. Begin to discuss planning a, like a pilot, like a, like a, a trial day. Uh, one year, I'm going year, sorry, one day in the spring. So we could actually just see in real time. You know what that actually looks like. And we'd have a better sense.
Really quick, can I just chime in? So the nineteen five, I know we talked about Terrence, you know, we've kind of done one through three, right? So does that number come down even?
I think so.
Right?
Yeah.
So let's aim high. So we want it all. Let, then we could settle for fifty.
Perfect.
I'm going to revise.
We remember man.
Yeah, I would agree a hundred percent from the town and, and. You know, with that, based on any kind of limited commitment, maybe we can start internally, like you said, you know, the, just the. You know, walking across the parking lot, the rugy, you know, it's, that's, it's dangerous, you know, we can start inside, you know, whereas and address the things that. You know, that the town would have more input in on later.
Thank you, Peter.
Five years ago, I said we shouldn't have paid for it in our referendum. We did, we paid for a hundred percent of it. So I, I, I would absolutely ask for a hundred percent, but I, I, I don't, I don't expect, I expect zero, actually. You know, I am, I hope to be wrong. But we've been talking about this for a decade. So, you know, considering anything that's going to change is, you know, it's a lot of talk. I'd like to see some action. So hopefully they hear that.
Mr. Damar, Vice President Damar?
Yeah, certainly if the township can pick up the tab, but also willing to work in collaboration to get this done. I just wanted to say if we could put a sense of urgency on getting this back so we can keep the ball rolling, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. And I support the, 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 the amount in, in full if necessary, but I also believe that zero is actually the correct number. Uh, not to you, not to you. Uh, but I'm getting. I'm sorry, Dr. Chlor, yes, 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 yes.
I do, I know, I know, I'm remote. So I too believe it's a great project, but I think the township benefits as much if not more, you know, than the school. So I think the township should pay a hundred percent and otherwise I would be a no. I think they should cover the hundred percent.
Thank you. I think the township does benefit. Far more, but we all are the township, aren't we? Right? We are all the township and the township budget itself, those taxes are paid by everybody on this dais. And everyone in the community. So it's really one entity. It's just deciding which checkbook, right? So what, what I took from this meeting is that there are and. For secretary, help me understand. I believe that there is a majority that. In the event it's necessary. Administration has the authority to, to work within those parameters for an item that it may be nineteen five. Very unlikely. But they have the flexibility and will work together. My, my, my view is zero, but the authority I think should, should be up to, up to the limit, even though I think that's going to get repriced anyway. Uh, but I do think we have five or more that are comfortable in the event we needed to get certain items done. That we can do that. Do, am I incorrect in that? Okay, thank you. That's all on that. Do you have any parting thoughts or anything that you'd like to share?
Sure. Just one question. We're going to eliminate the first three. I was thinking we're going to present something to you and then we're going to go to the town, but. If, if okay, I can set up a meeting with the township administrator just to introduce that we're being authorized to do some work here. And just get their temperature for what's going on before we move forward with doing anything else. Well, you know, maybe discussions are going to cause error.
As they say, we'll talk.
Okay.
All right. But thank you. Really appreciate you being here and giving us that, you know, that update. Very, very, very helpful. Uh, does, are there any other questions for the team here? Okay, great. Thank you very much. We really appreciate you being here. With that, unless there's another item, we can move now to old business. Are there any items that folks have under old business?
Just quickly, I just wanted to, at our last meeting. We discussed, it was asked to kind of find out how many of our students play a sport. And I just want to publicly say that. The answer was sixty-five percent of our student body plays one sport or more, but I'd also like to say that's without spring sports happening yet. So freshmen that have come in to the high school, we don't know. If they're actually going to play a spring, you know, because like my freshman last year only played softball. So. If she was a freshman right now, she wouldn't have been counted. So it could even go up, but sixty-five percent are playing one sport. I actually think that'll go up. So. I think that that's. A hu- like, you know, that's the majority of our, you know, that's clearly a majority of our students and.
That number was striking, striking.
Yeah. And like I said, I think it's actually going to be higher after. We should follow up after spring sports and or during spring sports and see if that number goes up. And then also it was.
And what was the premise of the conversation? I wasn't here last week. What was it?
I asked.
It was about, it was just because we were talking about the lights in the back. And so it was just.
Oh, how many, how much participation?
Like, you know, so it was just like, well, like spending all this money on sports, how many kids actually play sports? Like it was kind of like a general.
Yes.
Sixty-five percent. And then you're talking again, like from the freshmen, you don't even know how many of those are maybe only a spring sport. So I actually think it's going to go be even higher than that.
Wait, Pete maybe can help with this because he wasn't here, but you had commented that it would primarily be the rec leagues that would use the field, not the.
Yes.
Schools leagues, uh, the school teams, Pete.
Yeah, I would agree, you know, even though it's like build it and they will come. I mean, you could talk about, okay, the football field, football's a different animal because it's a Friday night town comes to football game. They don't come.
But they have a field for that for the lights already. So I had said, like, as far as spending the money on the lights, like it's. You know, it's nice and whatever, but when it comes down to it, school sports, with the exception of the Friday night football game, school sports are happening at three forty-five, four o'clock. That's the start.
Generally speaking.
So we're, it's not for. What us paying for the lights, it, it's fine. Like it is what it is, but it's really, it's for rec.
But the district is, the district is not going to benefit from it. If you talk to Coach Orecky, Coach Bosman's or whatever else, they are not playing a night games. They may play a night game here or there. They might do a senior game. They might do whatever, but generally speaking, those games will stay at five o'clock because they want to go home and, and the parents and everything else and the other families. So as much as I would love to have, oh, we'll play baseball. It's not happening. I mean, softball plays on the lighted fields in the back. The town will benefit from the lights more than anyone. And. We didn't get to do it during when we had the field and I, I, I wish we were able to. I still believe we spent one point eight million dollars for that field or one point six, whatever it came out to be. I firmly believe it should be a hundred percent town paying for this. And if it doesn't, again, I believe it's all home dealt kids. So I don't mind. It's a one-off. That if I have to share fifty fifty, that's the way it goes. Our budget stinks. It's only going to get worse. You have twenty million dollars like Terrence alluded to. Five million dollars last year. I would bet big, it's going to be five million again this year. You can't kick in two hundred thou- hundred and sixty thousand dollars really? For, for the kids of this town. So.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I said, it, it might be record combination, but there's still home dealt. It's still the home dealt community, right?
Yeah, but we're here for the, for like, so, but on this complex, when you think about it, like we're, our budget is for the student athletes when we're paying for what it is. Like it's. So like, that's our budget. So like, we're not, the town is supposed to worry about rec and we're supposed to worry about our student athletes and they're not the ones using it in the dark.
They're, they're, but they're students just in a different school in the district, I, I guess is kind of.
But for ten years, we were talking to town. There was conversation to get the town to put a turf field across over by the tennis center, whatever it is. Ten years went by. This board under this budget without improving, uh, increasing taxes, paid for it, full enchilada done. The biggest problem they had on their list was taken away by this school board. We, we handled their business. You know, that's, I mean, it, it's a one-off. So it's a hundred and sixty grand. At the end of the day, what's our budget? Sixty million dollars, whatever it is, it's not going to knock us out. And it's not like it's going to be a continual thing. It's just annoying that we have to.
Thanks. So, and, and that's, that's the beauty of hypotheticals. Me, it's going to be packed, but then, then we could start doing the McLaughlin group and I could be right in the middle.
But, but, but also what would happen if, because what, what I got out of the conversation last week is, is, is the priority of a safety issue, which is most important. And nobody's taking the lead to get these lights done. If a child got hurt on those fields, who's responsible? The, 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 the school district, right?
Everybody, yep.
So that, that's, that's the bigger, biggest driver of this. Obviously we don't want to see anybody get hurt, but, you know, we also have to cover ourselves because it's our field.
Yeah, I think it'll be great. But sixty-five percent of just, we're talking about sixty-five percent of the student body. Enjoy the fields. It's going to be great. Any other old business items?
Only other thing was, and I kind of mentioned it beforehand, but following up to a comment at the last meeting as far as like how many of our kids actually go to Brookdale. It's on our report card, twenty percent of our student body goes to a two-year college. So. That's why that dual enrollment, whether it's, you know, whatever it gets worked out, whether it's with a different, maybe it's not Brookdale, maybe it's Seton Hall or some other better, you know, programs, however it gets worked out, but. I'm happy to see that we're going in the, in the right direction because. You know, it's, to me, it's a smart move when college is seventy thousand dollars a year for some basic liberal arts stuff that's happening the first freshman in sophomore year.
The work that David Stout and the team at Brookdale are putting together is absolutely fantastic. Before I went off, I went through, uh, to school in London through Brookdale before I went on to four-year, four-year and eventually a master's degree. It's a fantastic school. It's one of the best community colleges in the country, in the country. Uh, so I would, I would encourage anyone to take a look. At Brookdale Community College, the work Stout's doing is absolutely amazing over there. New business.
We have some old business, Anthony and I.
Oh, okay. That I had it as new, but old is perfectly fine as well. Go ahead, Dr. Chlor.
I, I'll let Anthony start.
Thank you, Dr. Chlor. Thanks, Terrence. So Dr. Chlor and I had the opportunity to visit every cafeteria within each of the home del schools and we really had a great experience. So. It was great to be able to collaborate with Dr. Chlor as well and get different perspectives and so on. So I will just kind of review some of the notes that I took and, and Dr. Chlor as well. And we collaborated our notes together and was going to kind of highlight some bullet points. So. Nothing formal here, but what I will preface is that. Ultimately, it's going to be a work in progress, right? Whatever we looked at is things that we're going to have to be discussing with Chartwells or however that process. Pans out and how that works in terms of, you know, board member or administration wise and so on. But it's going to take some time. It's, it's going to take some chatting with Chartwells, but the overall consensus for myself and Dr. Chlor was. That we had a really positive experience with Chartwells. They happen to be one of the largest food or the largest food distributor in the United States, if not globally. And I think that brings us a lot of opportunity to be able to work with them to do really whatever we want to do. And to Terrence's point before about the AI policy that we're really setting the curve. Apparently according to Chartwells, we would be setting the curve with the stance that we want to try to take on nutrition. Moving forward with our student body. So I'm happy that Dr. Chlor and I could, you know, maybe start that initiative. So. Let me just see here. So once again, overall, it's positive experience. Chartwells is extremely accommodating. They want to give us the help that we want and need. But what we found is before I kind of get into some of the particulars is that what we found it's really. More of an educational factor. In terms of nutrition than it really would be what Chartwells puts out there. Because if you look at it from a perspective of you go into the high school, they have so many different options. They have a lot of healthy options and they have a lot of unhealthy options, but. Despite whatever options there are, at the end of the day, the main. Foods that are purchased are pizza, chicken fingers, french fries and. None of the healthy, real options are at the top of the list. So, so where do we look at from there? You know, when you go to the other schools now, the amount of food that's available. Lessons. For many different reasons, based upon the size of the facility, based upon conditions and so on. A lot of different factors go into that, but. Ultimately. It becomes a little bit more difficult at that age, but also their, their palates are not as mature as the older kids. So it's like, hey, we could put this stuff out here. But is anybody going to actually eat it or a bunch of kids can actually go hungry the rest of the day and be complaining that they didn't eat any food and then parents start getting upset and so on. So really. As what I was, the point I was trying to make is that we need to really look at our district wellness policy. And what guidelines, guidelines we need to follow or maybe. Change or whatever, and how we're going to educate from kindergarten. Through. Uh, high school on proper education of nutrition, right? And I'm sure that's easier said than done, but it's something that I feel like we should do. If you think about it, we, we want to mold and shape. Great minds, but without having a great body and, and health to, to utilize that mind, what good is it? So we should really be taking a big emphasis on. The nutritional value and what we're teaching to these kids on a daily basis, not just maybe like in a, a one-off monthly meeting type of scenario. That being said. You know, we, we want to look to reduce unhealthy options. I mentioned about the pizza and cold cuts actually was also on that list. So cold cuts, french fries, chicken fingers, pizza, the main. The main go-tos. I talked to a couple, Dr. Chlor and I spoke to a couple counter service people and just kind of gauging them what they thought, right? Not that there are any type of dieticians or nutritionists, but. The overall consensus was, yeah, the, the food's healthy, but not that healthy, right? But that's also the decisions of the children. But when they, they did mention, when they try to really put healthy options out there, the food goes to waste. Okay. Once again, going back to educating the children on the value of good food as opposed to fast type food. So Chartwells. Has a lot of different services that we can start to utilize or actually invoke because they haven't been utilized apparently as we discussed. By any other school districts for that matter. So one of the ideas that Dr. Chlor and I had was be put, putting up marketing. Right? Marketing materials on the walls for the high school students, the middle school students and so on. Saying, hey, you know, please take this analogy or this example with a grain of salt, but, you know, hey, don't get that salami sandwich. It equals, you know, a cigarette. We know that cold cuts have been on the, on a carcinogen list, right? So, you know, you have a, a picture of a kid smoking a cigarette and eating a salami sandwich. It's one and the same. Maybe they decide to, you know what? Let's go to the salad bar, right? Um, and I'm just saying, because also if you think about it, how many of these salad places are out there? That these kids go to all the time, not in school, but yet we went to the salad bar and it was kind of lacking, right? It was probably the least utilized place. But now maybe if we set up that cold cut station, moved it out, put a nice big spread of the salad bar and have somebody making salads, maybe chopping them up or something like that. That will invite more students to want to eat a little bit healthier. And once again, it's the marketing of it. It's the presentation of a lot of different things. It's the education and so on. So the.
Anthony, quick question.
Yeah.
Cold food is cold, hot food is hot. Like what visually you alluded to with the salad bar, perhaps being a little on the weaker side, like what was the, what was your take as, you know?
Looking at. I mean, my, my take was I think they're, they're doing an excellent job, right? For. What it's worth. It's almost like some of the other things we talk about. If we don't talk about it, it's not going to, it's just going to stay the same. But I think we're all in agreement that we want our kids to be healthy and learn healthy habits. So what we need to do is start pushing that a little bit more. So they don't grow up saying, hey, I'm just going to go get pizza. I'm going to go get salami sandwiches all day. Uh, and that's what I want to do. And that's what I think Dr. Chlor absolutely wants to do as well. So.
We have nutrition education in our curriculum as part of like woven into, okay, just wanted. Okay, thank you.
By the way, we have some salami sandwiches in the back if you guys want. So to kind of keep this, you know, to cut this short or just. You know, not go too long because we're going to have to come back with a, a detailed report of what we're able to work out with Chartwells and the process and the programs that we could potentially put in place to make this better. Ultimately, they have, as I said, a lot of tools that we could utilize. They have dieticians, they have nutritionists. We could have them come to the school and do a lot of that work for us rather than. Burden our teachers with trying to come up with new stuff and on their already packed schedules and so on. We can utilize Chartwells as the big company that they are to do what we need. And I think that's what we should do. I, quite frankly, I don't want to say I'm always up for a. Free market and such where, you know, putting stuff out to bid and things like that. I don't think it's that necessary at this point. They have every availability that we need in a, in a system that's going to bring us high value foods and so on. So I think we just. See what we could work out with them and keep moving on and move forward and just be on top of it. That's it. And then once again. The educational component of that probably, I don't, I don't want to say it needs to change because I don't, we haven't dived into that yet, but I would say it's. Paramount in the ability to get these kids to do the right thing, nutrition wise.
That's. Fantastic update. Really amazing. Really appreciate it. Dr. Chlor, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, a couple of things. Yeah, we had, I guess, divided up. So as he, as Anthony explained very, very well. We were, we were, we're quite impressed by the willingness of Chartwells to work with us. So. So I think that first we should work with them before we think about changing and, and even if we do change in future, because. Things don't work out well, we'll learn in the process. But firstly, I mean, we were thinking of this as, you know, availability of options. But um, firstly, I mean, we were thinking of this as, you know, availability of options. Uh, marketing of options, as Anthony said, positive marketing with posters. Uh, and also negative marketing and or, and then education. So with education, they really said they would get their nutritionist, um, you know, to speak, speakers, you know, um, in in various schools. And they can even have their dietitian or their chef, for that matter, to do a show and tell. So I think we could use those resources um, to uh, for classroom and 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 for each school as well. So and then with um, so that's from Chartwell's point of view, availability, I think a high school had a lot of availability of options. It is just that I wanted to see the calorie contents displayed, maybe on the, on the scrolling menu. And uh, place them close to the food. And uh, as Anthony said, the salad bar has to be made more attractive, there's plenty of space for it, I think we need to throw in more. More grains or avocado or something to make it more attractive and and direct the uh, students to the soups and salads, which are quite um, healthy. The bigger problem is Indian Hill and Sats space uh, view, uh, the viewing s- space and the time for the students is also limited. So but this is where we need to work on more. Here, um, as he said, the, there were lots of bread and cheese kind of options. Uh, pizza on Friday was a hit, uh, is that every Friday? So I think at least another two, three days, we should have one of the bigger menu items that they do have, but just two or three times a month. They have tacos and um, and low mein and and stuff, and maybe one day we can have an international food uh, day. So they can try different in a Mediterranean or Mexican or Indian options, and Chartwell said they would work with it. Um, and the other thing was uh, for water, wa- we want water coolers in each cafeteria. With posters directing them to water being the best drink in, on this earth, rather than them buying sodas. And also to save plastic, so there are water filling stations outside, but not in the cafe area. And one radical idea we had was uh, about cookies and and ice cream uh, being available. Cookies were available at the checkout counter, ice creams available just, you know, just in an unlimited fashion. Uh, this requires a lot of thinking and talking with parents and maybe student advisory committees as well, but at least for the lower grades. Maybe we can wrote, limit the number of sugary treats available. Between ice cream cookies and muffins, rotate them, you know, a couple of days and not everything available in an unlimited fashion at all times. And another kind of radical idea we had was maybe. We have now parents who to call in and say, my child should not get ice cream, which singles out the child. Maybe we should have parents call in and say, I want my child to get ice cream and see how many people really want it. So when we know that, maybe we can limit ice cream to two days a week. So, no, we can try things like that, but after checking with uh, parent teachers association, apparently Chartwell talks to them every month. They said they would bring these ideas up, Mike Petruza made a lot of notes. And so the work now lies in uh, putting it all together. Um, we have to set up meetings many more times and hopefully by September, we can make these changes.
Thank you very much, Dr. Klor. Uh, did you have something to say?
I just wanted to briefly say that I do appreciate you two putting the time into this endeavor. I- it's certainly a challenge. I mean, you talk about the chocolate chip cookies. Uh, as a student here at Home Del back in the nineties, uh, I usually won that battle of getting those before they ran out.
You're gonna get us all recalled, can I just put that out there?
Uh, but I do wanna say that um, we all know that uh, you just look out there and humans are the sickest they've ever been. And our children are the sickest they've ever been, and it all starts with what you put in your body. So we should certainly be emphasizing and put more into teaching children nutrition, but it is certainly a very challenging task. So uh, I support it and all the best and uh, look forward to continued updates.
Thank you very much for the update and thank you to the board members. I've been on the board a couple of years, Peter as well. I think that's one of the, the, the first deeper dives of board members going in and touring each facility to really come back with an. With a, with an in-person report directly from the board. Um, so thank you very much, you earned your um, you know, your special certificate today.
Terrence, I was gonna say, uh, a few years ago, during the buildings and grounds, one of the buildings and grounds meetings, we actually had our meeting in. I think it was Village School. And we watched a point of sale, how the kid, you know, Jeff would walk up, then I would walk up behind him, this way they would protect their PIN code and who they were. And then a picture of Jeff would pop up or Pete would pop up of whatever I'm gonna order. But I was gonna say, um, I, Advocate still with us? So Advocate is our, basically, you could say our Chartwells liaison. So Advocate is a paid professional that we pay every year, that the school district does, and he's like our paid professional to help, help us. So I would definitely involve him in our conversations, because he's, you know, I think Edgar Ricker, is that his name? Bill Gurker, uh, hasn't been here in a while, might be a good idea to have him at one of our committee, the whole meeting, just so you guys all can meet him. And he could explain what he does, because we do pay him, he is a contractor of ours. Uh, and Chartwell does do a great job, and we were the first school in the state to have the hive. You know, the school, and they've, they've marketed that, they've used that as like, oh, look what we've done in Homedale. Uh, but it is funny, if you look at the top ten, because he would, they would come to this meeting and show us the top ten of all the schools. It's probably very similar to what it was a bunch of years ago, and education is key. Because those chocolate chip cookies are right up there next to ice cream and everything else, and and I do know parents can lock out their kids from getting certain things. So that, that, that feature is in there, obviously, good luck doing that, but.
Thank you very much.
I think it's good stuff.
Do you have an item?
Say, it sounds like the, the dynamic of providing the more healthy choices is the struggle for them. That it it's more costly and a lot of the food goes to waste. I think when they were here, when Chartwells was here last time, don't they provide some sort of uh, like online ordering service? So that if you specifically want those healthy choices, you can order them, and maybe that's, that's the solution to handle that. Okay, thank you very much.
I don't think uh, that that will work, you know, just a parent has to call to ask for a healthy choice. I think the, the concept is that we should just make it available to, kind of for all kids to try out. That, that's the concept we're working on, not just one parent trying to be a rebel and saying no. I I also wanted to thank Scott and Giovanni and um, and uh, Mike, who really spent a, a lot of time, you know, accompanying us.
Yes, thank you for putting that, all that together, truly appreciate it.
Thank you very much, and may I say, food for thought. Yes. Yeah, there we go. Any other items? Oh, and I do believe we have water stations throughout the, the schools.
No, but the water stations are not in the cafe area, they're, they're at random, they are the bathrooms, kind of.
All right, so we'll connect on these items. Great, fantastic start. Uh, that's the first initiative of that depth that I've seen since I've been on the Board of Education. Um, any other items under new business? Oh, I'm sorry, oh, I apologize, all business. Hearing non-new business.
I got four quick ones, real easy ones. So one, wrestling, one forty-one thirty, if everyone hadn't heard, huge win over Haslett. Supposedly, some other old-school wrestling guy says is one of the best wrestling meet, matches they've seen as long as they've been here, which is so, congrats to the boys. On the agenda, if you didn't see, we actually approved a wrestling uh, volunteer, Jim Avento, I guess he goes back a long time. So just, you know, we, we did a good thing tonight, it's gonna only further help that uh, that team. Uh, second thing, hockey team, they won last night, uh, they've had a tou- uh, a challenging season, but they raised six thousand dollars for cancer. So last year they did it, uh, they played down on the Jersey Shore and they beat Wall uh, seven-six in a uh, and 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 a crazy battle. So actually, they actually might make states and the uh, the short conference tournament, which is, which is definitely a remarkable uh, thing for them. And the third thing, you guys all probably got the course books for the high school. I don't know, Scott, if there's, if those are still available in hard copy. Uh, that, that, it's hard, it's, it's, it's a challenge to look at the course, the high school course book, you know, on, online. It it's a tremendous thing, uh, but if you have an opportunity to look at it, I'm still glad that they do the first page. Where they say the new courses we have from last year. A lot of times, you just don't know what's in that book, because it's a ninety-nine page book. Uh, and then it has, I know there was an email from Scott on the Capstone, uh, Engineering Capstone Event. Or the high school capstone career concentrations, excuse me. There's sixteen of them, uh, that the kids can opt into. I just hope that our guidance councils are advising the students enough to say, hey, look, you know, student, you have an opportunity to get a career concentration. Then a diploma in business or theater or dance or whatever it is. So I'm just, you know, Scott, hopefully, uh, Matt and those folks are uh, are doing that, so the kids are aware that they have a good, a bunch of opportunities. And then the last thing, is there an update on the uh, cancer pediatric screening that we had talked about uh, for a couple of months? Are we look, is that something that we might be able to get done uh, in the springtime?
The cardiac screenings?
Yes, sir.
The heart, the cardiac, yeah.
Yes, um, actually, Mr. Cassal is uh, finalizing the logistics for that. Um, should be with, uh, we're looking at March, so he's identified a provider that can do that.
Cool, thanks.
So thank you, board member, ready for bringing that up. For all parents, focus in March for cardiac screening for your children. Right here in the district, right here in the district. Focus on it, it's extremely important, some of the items that will come out, you know, come out during those teenage years. And uh, and uh, it's a very, very, very critically important uh, to have that screening. Thank you very much. Other items under new business?
Uh, just a brief update for the policy committee. So we adopted the policy committee late last year, we were unable to meet in January. Uh, the members for twenty twenty-four is myself, board member Tachillo, board member La Presti and uh, President Wall. We plan to meet on February fourteenth. Um, this is certainly a, a critical function of the board and we've got a lot of work ahead of us. Um, we have a number of different policies that have come up through certain experiences recently that we're going to discuss. And I just wanted to mention that um, we do use Strauss Esme for many years, um, they were brought up last year. Um, some board members have kind of lost trust in them, um, with some of the incidents. And there's really uh, not too many options, but the New Jersey School Board Association is an option. And we're gonna discuss possibly reaching out to them and talking to one of their agents, what a transition would look like. And I've, I've heard from some other districts that have done this, and and what I do like about it is they do a forensic audit. And we have hundreds of policies that are just frankly outdated. I mean, we put an AI policy in and um, you look at things like plagiarism and uh, certain things that are coming into the district. Um, so I'm, I'm excited to uh, provide an update after the fourteenth at our next meeting and we'll take it from there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any items under new business? Okay, since we're getting close to midnight. That's good. Actually, board member Buckley said he was gonna repurpose this gavel if we're not uh, running an efficient meeting. We'd like to, we'd like to open it up now to the public, thank you very much for your patience. Uh, mic is yours on any item and uh, thank you very much. Mic is yours, please. Thank you. Good evening. Oh yeah, what depends.
All right, well, this one works, thank you. Good evening, um, I'm Denise King, president of the Board, um, Home Del Township Education Association. I wanted to thank the Board of Education, um, especially Dr. Cascone and Elena Germaine for all the hard work behind the scenes. Getting to this agreement that we've reached. Um, it's been a long time for my new board members, it's been a long time coming. And I do appreciate all the patience on both sides working towards this. And it brings forth that collaboration that Terrence was talking about to move forward. Um, to make sure that the association and the Board of Education can make sure that they, moving forward. That we can continue this collaborative working relationship and um, improve the school district as we obviously see things like. The turning signal to get into the high school and that, I liked your ideas, Terrence, on making a little drop off, because that is dangerous for the kids.
Yeah, share your thoughts if you have thoughts on that, I mean.
Yeah, that on a separate issue, yeah. So when you go into the school in evenings, afternoons, when parents are dropping their kids off or when the kids are coming across. From, say, the fields, it is pretty, it is pretty unsafe. So I mean, it, it would be a good idea to have that, if you, I mean, if we could put in a spot where parents could pull it aside, pick their co- their children up. And then a clear, like, super clear crosswalk in several locations maybe even. So the kids, as they come out of those different gates, know that they should stop, walk across that area. Because a lot of times they're just kind of cutting through, and if you're driving through, even if you're driving really, really slow, you never know. That's the, that's your biggest nightmare to worry about some child running. And I know as a parent and as a community member and a pet and a teacher, that that would be my biggest fear is a kid running. Because they don't really always pay attention, they're talking to their friends and they kind of walk out. And the same thing when they see their mom or their dad coming to pick them up or their older sibling, having that little spot, that would be beneficial. So thank you, everybody, again, and I really appreciate it and continue working with you.
Thank you very much, Denise. We know Denise a very long time and she works on behalf of her members very diligently. And uh, and I'm sure that they appreciate that as well. During negotiations, she has uh, what do you call it, this headlock approach. Uh, and we always have a fruitful discussion, so appreciate you being here tonight. Uh, would any other folks like to come to the microphone? Uh, this is the public portion, this is your meeting, feel free to come uh, and uh. Share your thoughts or views if you would like to do so. Bro. Seeing everyone but none coming forward, wanna, want to, then we can close that, that portion. And we do not require, to my knowledge, any other executive session. So if everything else is in order and there's nothing further, may we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Do you have a second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Thank you very much, good night, folks.